Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand twelve. At this point, if you please join the end of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yaku.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, T-Winkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here. At this point in the agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on any item that's not on the agenda? I'll ask one more time, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council on anything that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of April twenty-third, two thousand twelve, to approve claims for payment in the amount of five hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven-hundred fifty-seven dollars. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of fireworks paraphernalia sales permits for the sale dates of June fifteenth, two thousand twelve, to July seventh, two thousand twelve, inclusive, at the following locations contingent on attending the mandatory meeting with the community development director, police, and fire department. Menards number thirty-eighty-nine for the Menard store at fourteen hundred Gatewood Boulevard. Fleet Farm of Menominee Incorporated for the Fleet Farm store at ten oh-one Industrial Street. Charles Walker TNT fireworks for the Target store, number twelve thirty-five, at twenty-four oh-one Cooley Road, and the Walmart store at twenty-two twenty-two Crestview Drive. To accept a low bid from J.F.A. Hearn Company of Menominee, Wisconsin, in the amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars to prepare the code compliance specifications for the public safety building sprinkler system and authorize the fire department to advertise for bids for the project. To approve the agreement with Doboy's Pizza, five twenty-nine Second Street, for the lease of the Lakefront Park Bathhouse concession and central storage area for the two thousand twelve season through September thirtieth, two thousand twelve. To accept the bid from Hudson Ford in the amount of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars for a half-ton pickup truck and proceed with the purchase. To approve the issuance of a special event permit for the Hudson boosters and their request to be considered a community event and to allow a reduction in the amount of required insurance to one million dollars with the understanding that the disability parking will be provided in the Lakefront Park Bathhouse parking lot and signs showing availability will be placed at the entrance to the lot and that all signage must be picked up at the end of the event. To place on file the room tax report for the first quarter of two thousand twelve. To approve the issuance of an amusement device owner's license to Vanda Fenner McGee and the issuance of permits for eleven amusement devices located at Dibbo's, five seventeen Second Street. To authorize Crystal and Mike Miller to construct a fence within a utility easement area at thirty-eight Robin Lane upon execution of an easement agreement. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk, the semi-annual report of the community development director, and the community access board minutes of April twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, and the public utility commission minutes of May eighth, two thousand twelve, and that is all.
There was one item, I'm not sure, I must have missed it, but item thirteen, change in agent for Northland, did you read that?
I did not read that.
Okay. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
T-Winkle.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Yaku.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Vanslo.
Yes.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the planning commission for final development plans for seventy-five hundred square foot bank facility at four oh-four County Road UU, north of County Road UU, Vine Street, and east of Carmichael Road, Central Bank. Mr. Darnold.
Central Bank proposes a seven thousand, five hundred square foot bank facility, again, located at the northeast quadrant of Carmichael Road and County Trunk UU Vine Street. It will be a drive-up facility. Access to that overall development will be off Carmichael at the both existing driveways or to County Trunk UU driveway. Those driveways are not changing. There will be blanket access easements through the two developments to accommodate access to and from the site. Planning Commission recommends approval of the final development plans for Central Bank with the condition that the final plans be revised per the city engineer's memorandum of May second, two thousand twelve, and his comments basically are limited to making sure that the current plans and specifications citations are on those plans. Mr. Todd Swivelhofer from LA Architects is here tonight. If you have any questions, Todd or myself would be pleased to answer your questions.
I'll move for approval under committee recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Jenny, I'm just wondering if, for the benefit of the viewing audience, if you could describe physically where this is going to be relative to other buildings that exist right now.
Well, at the corner of Carmichael Road and County Trunk UU, there's a storm pond. Immediately east of the storm pond is where this facility will be located at.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is by Hudson Bagel, right?
Just south of Hudson Bagel, correct.
Okay.
But in a separate building.
In a separate building. With a separate driveway. No.
Cool. That's awesome.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, you're still up there, review conditional use permit for TNT Collision Center at seventeen oh-one Cooley Road. Tom and Tammy Detweiler.
This conditional use permit for auto repair and auto body repair shop at seventeen oh-one Cooley Road. And then with a three-year extension, so it's up for consideration. I believe the Detweilers have been very good stewards of their permit, and Planning Commission recommends a continuation of conditional use permit for TNT Collision Center for auto repair and auto body shop at seventeen oh-one Cooley Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, requests from Good Shepherd Academy to extend conditional use permit for one year for a temporary classroom at twelve thirty-two Fifth Street, seven nineteen twelve to seven nineteen thirteen.
Again, Good Shepherd Academy, Good Shepherd Christian Academy was issued a conditional use permit for a two-year temporary classroom at the Trinity Church and Educational Academy at the northeast quadrant of St. Croix Street and Fifth Street. They're asking for a one-year extension of that to allow their cooperative effort with Trinity Academy to propose some additional classroom space at Trinity Academy, at Trinity Lutheran Church. As I mentioned, at the Planning Commission, it should be limited and understood that there will only be a one-year extension on this. I think we've been very gracious in offering them an opportunity for a two-year with any potential extension of a third year on a temporary facility. Planning Commission recommends approval, the extension of the conditional use permit for one year from July nineteenth, two thousand twelve, to July nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, for temporary classroom structure for Good Shepherd Christian Academy at twelve thirty-two Fifth Street. Mr. Patrick Richter from Good Shepherd Christian Academy is here tonight to answer any questions you may have of them. I don't know if there's anybody from the neighborhood. I did send out a notice, none of the neighbors attended the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if any of them are here tonight to comment on the request for the extension, but I did not receive any calls or emails from the neighborhood.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have application for renewal of liquor licenses for a period of seven, one, twelve to six thirty thirteen. Hostile action extension for Russell Evens. Russ?
You do it again.
Yes, you do.
Now, Mayor, you were here for the finance committee.
Always am.
So was Mr. T-Winkle.
John, were you here?
Yep.
Citizens Police Academy, I was at for the first forty-five minutes.
The first time. Okay, I'm here because on our last council meeting last month, I had the stipulation that I was supposed to close by the fifteenth. Everything seemed to be going good. The bank approved their portion of the loan. The SBA approved their portion of the loan, but the appraisal came through too low. And that's what happens in the business. When I opened my Amory location, I had quite a bit more in than the building was appraised for. I sold my dresser location, I sold it for three times what the building was appraised for. What you're looking for is the business. I think I'll have enough business to cover what the additional expenses. But the bank needs more collateral, which means I have to appraise my other location. And it was appraised today, we stopped in today, and he said he'll have the appraisal for the bank by the twenty-fourth. Hopefully, we close by the first of June. Like Sam, I guaranteeing that. But I do guarantee that I will get this project done if you let me. I guarantee it's going to be a benefit for the Hudson. I know it will benefit the businesses on Locust Street. Hopefully, it'll benefit my family, but I'm not guaranteeing anything on that. I guarantee I'll be back here in August asking for another extension because I, hopefully, I'll have it open by the first of October. I want to get it open as fast as possible. See, I've got four full-time employees right now that I don't need. They're getting trained in for this. Each month costs me about over eight thousand dollars a month in labor. So I want to get it open as fast as possible, but I want to open it right. Other than that...
Okay.
If you want to approve it, thank you. If you don't, I can get some sleep.
Well, it looks like we need a minimum of extension at June one to see if it closes or sometime in June.
I would guess our...
Did you explain that finance recommendation?
No.
You may want to explain that to the council.
Seems like so long ago. So much has happened.
Only fifteen minutes ago.
Longer than that.
Yeah.
Well, we decided to extend it through the end of June, right?
Yeah, he has to come back for his renewal.
With proof of closing.
And he'll need to have closing done to renew the license.
I think the motion was to waive the May fifteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have to make it continue.
Have him come back for his renewal and...
At our June...
That he needs to have a facility.
So really, June twenty-fifth is as late as it can happen?
Yep.
Because you can't give a license without a facility.
Without a premises.
So that's your last date, June twenty-fifth.
Yes.
If you want to come earlier, it's June...
No, I'd love to come earlier.
Yeah, June eleventh.
You know, this is so simple. There's two license opens beside this one, you know. You're working, you're doing everything you need to do. Everything, you can't help what's going on, so let's, you know, let's get this going.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the extension with dropping the contingency date or per finance committee's recommendation.
Okay.
Excuse me, Brian would like to say a couple of things, if it's okay.
Okay.
If you can wait until the common motion.
No, if you want, you might as well now. We have a motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second that.
The last thing I ever want to do is stop a city council in the middle of making a vote that may be favorable to my client. The only thing I wanted to tell you is, first of all, for those of you who were not here earlier, my name is Brian Burns, and I'm Russ's attorney, and I'm from Amory. And one of the concerns, that's a legitimate concern of the cities, is that you haven't had any tangible proof that this transaction is there. Believe me, I think you've all seen Russ. He's certainly become fairly well-known to you all with the number of meetings he's come to, but we're hitting that critical stage of the transaction. And part of the reason why I'm here is to convince you that, boy, we're so close, and we've had kind of this issue of how do we give you formal proof of the transaction without necessarily giving up any particular details. Now, I'm grateful very much for the council's willingness to cooperate with what Russ is doing, in particular for what, you know, how do you issue a license without a building, for instance? The deal is contingent on the liquor license, and that's probably a fairly self-evident statement, but when my client is telling you that he's going to be putting up his collateral of his own restaurant in Amory, I'm hoping that gives you the sense that he's really putting his money where his mouth is. And I can tell you that the building in Amory is a converted grocery store. I'm not sure how many of you have ever seen Russ's place in Amory, but I used to work in that grocery store, and he's done a heck of a good job making it into something actually productive. I have every expectation that he will do that for the post office here in Hudson. And if there's any indication, if you ever wanted a comparison to see the impact of Russ's restaurant on the city of Amory, I can tell you, as a matter of professional practice, that it has been extremely difficult for other restaurants to get a foothold in town because, well, frankly, the Village P3 is just so dang successful, for lack of a better term. Sunday mornings, you can't find a spot to park. My office is right across the street. You can't see at night where there isn't a crowd of people there until at least nine or ten o'clock at night. Now, that's all anecdotal. That isn't meant to be anything except persuasion to you to say Russ has done an incredibly good job with what he's done in Amory. And if you've never had the opportunity to eat there, well, I strongly encourage it, but I simply hope that you get the opportunity to do that here in Hudson. So with that being said, if there were any questions about the specifics of the deal that I might be able to comment on, I welcome any of those questions, although I do want to be mindful of the fact that there are provisions of the offer that are confidential. In fact, the offer in and of itself is confidential, but because there is a need to cooperate with the city to make this happen, we want to do what we can to make sure that the city has what they need to make it go forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, going back to item three. Okay, let's do the renewals. Would you like, we want to do the renewals from seven, one, twelve to six, thirty, thirteen. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'll renew, I will accuse myself.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on those?
Can I make sure that...
Yep.
Wisman Hospitality is included with those approved because it was separated out? We're doing the renewals for the...
It has approved their, resolved their issues.
That's right. So they should be included for those that can be approved.
Okay. We didn't have that in finance, right? It wasn't included in finance. Okay.
Right.
So we're adding the extra...
So the only one not being approved is...
Wisman.
Yep. Any discussion? Has there been a motion to approve there has? In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we need to go back to operator's license. I believe that was pulled also.
I'll accuse myself, just in case.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it's just the five, sixteen, twelve.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then there's the last one, and I don't have the sheet in front of me, which will be... No, the...
Seven, one, twelve to six, thirty, fourteen.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
And then there's two temporary operators' licenses, right?
Okay.
For booster days?
Booster days, we have two.
I'll move for approval for those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, was that on consent?
Yes.
So we're down to disallowance of claim for Gary R. Reynolds, resolution ten dash twelve, suspend rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Bernard.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Yaku.
Yes.
Hoggatt.
Yes.
Vanslo.
Yes.
T-Winkle.
Yes.
Is there a motion to disallow of claim number ten dash twelve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I guess we have number eleven, consider options for stairway for mooring access on the Dyke Road. I believe that finance recommendation is to send it back to the...
No, go ahead with plans and...
Go ahead with, well, for the time to go ahead and get plans from the, get plans and specs and approval from the DNR, and then we'll see how much it's going to cost. That'll be brought back to us.
Move for approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No.
Is there a no?
No.
No? Okay. Motion carries five to one. Okay, we have a change in agent, now item thirteen, for Northland Liquors at nineteen twenty Crestview Drive.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Park Board, five, one, twelve, Girl Scout donation of bench in Lakefront Park.
Don, sorry about the last name. Wunowski, from the Hudson Girl Scout Group approached the park board and is requesting to put a bench in Lakefront Park. She presented her proposal to the park board, and the park board approved the installation of this park bench in Lakefront Park.
Don, do you have anything you'd like to say? No? We appreciate that, your donation. Any thoughts from council?
There's two benches going in, right?
Just for one bench.
One bench.
What are the warriors?
Randy, two locations were listed as options, but it is one bench.
I was going to say Girl Scouts in here.
Which one do they decide to place where? What'd you agree on?
Actually, this, it was location one, it's behind the benchel in Lakefront Park.
Okay.
It was a location that we were considering for a bench.
We'll move for approval of this.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, sir.
Any discussion?
Thanks to the Girl Scouts.
Yes.
Thank you. Don, thank you very much.
We really appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update on projects.
You're going to be busy. Good evening again. Yeah, that's good. Just briefly touch on the projects that are either under design or under construction. Excuse me, for the city project, the two thousand twelve street improvements that council approved, we've just started collecting information for reconstructing Grandview Drive, says avenue, should say drive, from Vine to Ash, the alley north of River Street between Sixth and Seventh and Carmichael Road from Vine, basically almost up to the middle school. And we're collecting some coring samples and getting a survey, and we'll start the design in a couple of weeks on that. Put the urban forestry management topic on here, that work has been done by your arborist, but we're doing the tree sites software training next week with city staff, and so they can start using that to input all the inventory data, as well as all the work that Public Works has already been doing, the tree removal and trimming and planting. Private developments, listed the ones that have activity on them this year, comforts of home across from the post office, probably seen the patch on Hamley Road up there, I'm sorry, on Hagan, and all the utilities are in and the driveways are in.
Have they patched that?
Not, as of Friday, they had not. And I'll check with the contractor on the status, I'm assuming they're doing it when they're going to pave the parking lot.
And they're going to clean that street up?
Yeah.
The gutter's full of gravel and dirt?
Yep, that's their responsibility.
All right.
Mississippi Flats, although construction is done, we're doing a final inspection and punch list, performed that with Jim Frye here last week, and there'll be some punch list items that they need to fix. Left Goodwill on there, there's some housekeeping, call them housekeeping, landscaping issues with the trees and the ditches that we wanted to look at this year one last time. Not the best design for the landscaping to take hold out there, so we'll see what we can do. Not recommendations there. And I forgot one little project, Uline, there's about sixty acres being graded out on the southeast side, so I'm sure you've seen that if you're driven by.
I've been hearing it.
Or if you live close by, yeah. So that was my report. If anyone had any questions on anything?
Questions for Dennis?
Thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. At this point, we have a petition of the Hudson Hospital for a direct annexation of approximately twenty acres, four twenty-three and four twenty-nine Stage Line Road in the town of Hudson, except for the future considerations that refer to Planning Commission. City attorney and city staff review. Dennis?
Again, this request for, or the petition for annexations for two parcels at four twenty-three and four twenty-nine Stage Line Road, perhaps better known as the Mary and George Hole property and Rita and Einerhorn property. The proposed intent of the annexation is to provide additional space for approximately forty thousand square foot expansion, the hospital clinic facility. Those plans were received yesterday and will start to review soon as possible. My recommendation is for acceptance of the petition of annexation from Hudson Hospital Incorporated for future consideration, referral to the Planning Commission, city attorney and city staff for review.
Okay. Questions?
I move we accept the petition for annexation from Hudson Hospital.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Future action on this issue would be development of an annexation agreement, which Kathy and I typically work on, and a recommendation by the common council, and at some point in the future would be an ordinance, which is required by state law to be approved, so it has to be approved by a state, by an ordinance consideration.
I did note, Danny, too, it's a town of Troy on your issue sheet. You maybe caught that, too, but...
All right.
Anything else? Thank you, Dennis. Appointments to Hudson Library Board and the Hudson Urban Forestry Board. Rich O'Connor has been serving on the board since last August. He was appointed to fill out the term, and I'd like to recommend that he be appointed again. So is there a motion to approve him?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have a, then we have a new committee that we haven't done any appointments for. I'm going to recommend John Hoggatt as our city council representative, from a member of the city council, common council, and this position is appointed annually. We're also going to appoint, or I'd like to appoint six citizens with staggered terms. They are Ken Holman, Diane Prock, help me with that.
Frolicker.
Frolicker.[1771.23] Liz Brush. Brooke. Sarah Inger. Starla Inger. Bill Baumann. And Liz...
Melanopy.
Melanopy. And you can see the terms that they have there. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have two proclamations I have. And I will read them, and of course, tonight there was a presentation or a ceremony up in Richmond honoring the fallen police officers that were killed in the line of duty in the last year. And this is the day is, whereas the citizens, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as National Police Officers Memorial Day and the week which falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Hudson Police Department play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Hudson, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand problems, duty and responsibility of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding their life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. And whereas the police department of Hudson has grown to be a modern law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Therefore, I, Alan D. Burchill, call upon all citizens of Hudson and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May thirteenth through the twentieth, two thousand twelve, as Police Week, and to commemorate the police officers, past, present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the community. Also, we have Emergency Medical Services Week, a proclamation where emergency medical services is vital public service, providing lifesaving care to those who need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And where the members of the St. Croix EMS and Rescue, with a roster of fifty-seven EMTs and rescue technicians, of which nineteen are EMT paramedic level, respond to seventeen hundred and twenty-seven calls during two thousand eleven, and access the quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and the recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And the members of Emergency Medical Services, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And the two thousand twelve theme EMS More Than a Job, It's a Calling, was chosen to celebrate the exceptional service by providing to countless patients every day in often incredibly challenging circumstances. It illustrates the fact that EMS providers are dedicated to saving lives and limiting suffering on a daily basis. They are selfless professionals who put their own lives on hold, day after day, to respond to the emergency needs of others. Now, therefore, I, Alan Burchill, call upon the citizens of Hudson and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May twentieth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve, as Emergency Medical Services Week. That's all I had. Any other person for communications? City attorney? City administrator?
Briefly, there is the election summary on the table tonight from the May eighth election, the June fifth election. The earliest we will have absentee ballots is next Monday, the twenty-first, but it may be as late as the twenty-third because of the certification process. So if anybody's interested in voting absentee here at city hall, they might want to call before they come down. And the last day to vote absentee is Friday, June first.
And the election is?
Election is Tuesday, June fifth, seven AM to eight PM.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.